Alright everyone, good evening and welcome to the December 6, 2023 Meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall it for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's begin with introductions down to my right, please.
Dan Poishon, Ward 5. Ryan Bellnat, Ward 4.
Pam Hart, Ward 2. Karen Mathie, Ward 3. Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Pat Gaudier, at large.
Pamela Albert, at large.
Jason LeBuck, Mayor.
Julian Dumay, Junior Representative.
Mark Conrad, Business Manager.
Sue Doris, Assistant Superintendent.
Alright, I do know that Connor Dufour has an excused absence this evening and I'm sorry, I do not know where the Ward 1 rep is she coming? Okay, alright, I have not heard from her. Alright, let's start with an approval of tonight's agenda which includes the minutes from November 15th as well as the, as well as the certificated contracts for Dr. Carmen Moreno Diaz and Lindsay Adams. Do I have a motion?
It's a motion.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pam, I'll grab you over here. Questions, comments? Thinking about that one? Alright, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public participation. Typically, we hold public, if you have a comment on anything that's on the agenda, we wait till you hold it until the agenda. But at this point, if you want to comment on anything that is on the agenda, you are welcome to step up to the podium. And I believe there may be a sign-up sheet there, so hopefully people can flow. Dr. Doris, are you okay if you grab that and just sort of let people know who's next, next, and next, if that would, if that would help?
So, is this where we can comment about the...
Alright, so, no, I'll open it back up again, but I will open it back up again when the add agenda item comes up. If you would like to comment now about it, you can. You will also be able to comment about it again when we, I would imagine it's the committee that people are worried about. So if you can comment then, and you can comment again now. So both times. Perfect. Sure. Okay. Anyone else like to come now? Or do you want to wait till after the presentation, until the very last part of the meeting? Completely up to you. Alright, would anyone else like to speak at all during public participation for anything not on the agenda this evening? Not seeing none, I will close public participation. Alright. Moving on, our presentation this evening, it starts with a recognition of outgoing school committee members, which, thank you. I'd like to ask school committee member Pam Hart if she would like to make a few comments.
So, I'm one of the people that have been on this the longest, other than Dan and Brian, so I just have a few words for all of you outgoing people. Clarissa's not here yet, but four years ago, you and I, Karen, embarked on a venture that neither of us ever imagined we would do. As moms, we decided to go for it and try to help improve our children's schools and the ASD, the Auburn School Department. I honestly don't think we ever thought we would win, let alone be here tonight. It's been an absolute honor to serve with you, Karen, and I know that our dear friend and angel, Alfreda, is looking down on us tonight with tears of pride. It's also been an absolute pleasure to serve with you, Brian and Jason. Thank you for all you've done to help improve the ASD, the Auburn School Department, sorry. We may not have always agreed on issues throughout the years, but I've always appreciated your dedication to the students, parents, staff, and community. It has also been an absolute pleasure serving on committees, as well as the school committee with you, Clarissa. I've always loved your view of the world and your inclusivity in all things. As a school committee, I think that we have always prioritized all stakeholders, and in doing so, we have been able to accomplish many great things with the help of an amazing Auburn School Department staff and Dr. Brown at the helm. I want to thank you all for your service and all the hours you've spent away from your families to serve on the school committee all these years. Best of luck and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you very much. Committee and EI Committee, so we wish you the best and thank you very much. Thank you.
So, the longer story is a harder task. So, Brian, on behalf of the Auburn School Department, I'd like to thank you for your service to students in our schools and our community, your leadership on the negotiations team, the finance committee, and I know I'll forget more, but you have been a part of this important group for many years. We'd like to thank you and wish you well. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you.
Alright, next, we are here, and this is what we are all here for this evening, to hear the information from the, from Harriman on the presentation of the Facilities, Facility Studies, so I think... Lisa Sawin and Steve, come on up. Somewhere. And we have a PowerPoint to share, and Dr. Doris, I believe you will help run it, or Lisa, will you advance it as?
Advance it.
You can advance it by yourself. Okay. Well, great. Well, welcome. These folks are from Harriman Architects, and they are going to go through the presentation regarding the facility study that was commissioned by the Auburn School Committee roughly last spring. This was a goal for the 22-23 school year, to evaluate all of the Auburn School Department facilities and to provide to us a report regarding what they see as some of the way forward here. So, thank you. We're really pleased that you came.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having us. Great to see everyone and thank you for everyone who's moving on in your service. So, as Superintendent Brown mentioned, we are going to walk you through the Facilities Master Plan Development Update. It is a Facilities Master Plan and five-year priority plan for facilities. So, we will jump right in. Tonight's agenda, I will go over what the project charge was, what we were tasked to do and look at. We'll talk about the enrollment study that was conducted. We'll look at capacity of schools. We'll look at facilities assessment. The facilities assessment is where architects and engineers walk around the schools and look at the conditions of the schools and report on those. Energy use intensity, so this is the efficiency of your school. Think of it as almost the miles per gallon for your car, but for your school, for your buildings. Existing school data and facility repair priority lists, preliminary options, and next steps. So, the, our charge was to assess the condition of existing buildings and provide a five-year plan for improvements to, that are needed for the buildings. And the second part of our charge, what we were asked to do was determine near and long-term options for efficient use of elementary schools. We had an enrollment study updated by Wendell Consulting. They do enrollment projections throughout the state. They have done previous projections for Auburn as well. What these projections are showing, and I'll get into a little bit more detail in the coming slides, but just kind of a high-level overview. There has been a decrease over the past 10 years. There is a projected continued decrease over the next 10 years. And the enrollment projections do not account for what we call the draw of a new high school. So, sometimes when new schools are built, we will see students move into the district. So, we are cognizant that enrollment projections cannot predict this. We will outline some near-term solutions. We'll talk about some long-term strategies. But in general, some of those long-term strategies are going to want to wait and see what that impact is that the high school has on your enrollment. So, enrollment projection data summary, a lot of text on this slide, and I apologize, that's like the biggest presentation, no, no, but there are a lot of things that factored into this decrease that is seen. So, births have been a big driver of the loss in overall enrollment, which is moving through the grade levels. And you'll see this in a more graphic representation in a little bit. Coupled by the fact that every grade level with one exception, K to first grade, has experienced an average outmigration of students. And what that means is students were born here, but have outmigrated to either they've left, they've left the area, or they are going somewhere else for schooling, or maybe they're homeschooled. Preschool migration is also very variable. It is used, it used to be more stable, but now there are some fairly significant swings in the migration trends, ranging between a loss of 1.6% all the way up to 20.5% from births to six years prior. That might change in the future to return to a more stable level, but considering this variability started back in 2017, 18, the enrollment projection has said that it's a migration variability and it is not the result of COVID. The analysis doesn't suggest new housing is playing a significant role in enrollment. The outmigration trends really are stable enough for her to say that she can't see the housing doing much to change this unless there is a significant slash major shift. Housing starts and future projects included in the analysis, we are confirming that with the enrollment projectionist right now. So, I don't have that data to present on tonight, but we will follow up with that. And then, future overall enrollment in Auburn will be impacted by that decline in resident births and the significantly smaller pre-K through 6 class sizes that have occurred over the last couple of years. So, here's what that looks like in numbers. So, you see all the schools down the left-hand side of the screen, and then you see across the top year ranges. So, going back 10 years, we're looking at 2012 to 13. In the middle, you see today, 22 to 23, and then going forward, you see 32 to 33. So, what we're seeing is a historic decline and a projected decline as we go forward. And it, it varies per school, but in general, we are seeing a decline that had been happening in the elementary schools. And going forward, you are going to see it in your middle and high school. So, if we look at the high school, middle school, and then we look at all the elementary schools, you can see the overall numbers. The last 10 years, there's been a decline of about 487 students. We had looked at the October 1st dates based on the 22-23 year, and then the ones right next to it, that's why there's two asterisks. The ones right next to it on the right-hand side of that line are October 1st dates as of this year, so we're able to pull that data as well. And you can see that they're fairly close to what was projected for 22-23. And then going forward, we are seeing a projected decline, almost the same total number that you saw in the past 10 years at 474. So, just under 1,000 students, based on historic data and projected data. So, that is essentially the snapshot of the enrollment data for Auburn. So, after enrollment, we look at capacity. So, we're going to need to understand the number of students that you have today, the number of students you're going to have going forward, and then we look at the capacity of your schools. So, per building, we look at the building capacity, and this is based on square foot numbers, the capacity of those schools. And so, you look on it, you look at the left-hand side, and that is the capacity based on square footage. The middle is based on the current enrollment today, or, and I should say October 1st of '23, so we're all using the same number. And then, projected enrollment going forward. So, you can see that some of the schools are under capacity. Some are slightly over capacity today. Some are significantly under capacity, and some are pretty much right, right where they should be. And then, going forward, you can see that more, really all of the schools are under capacity based on the projected enrollment going forward. Some significantly and some not. So then, another way to look at this is we start to chart this, and I'll explain what the colors mean. So, the dark blue is the building capacity, the gray is your current enrollment, and the light blue is your projected enrollment. So, we can start to see where we might have some misalignment between enrollment and capacity. So, first, we put the elementary schools together on the left-hand side. So, in the red boxes is where we've kind of summarized elementary on the left and then middle high school on the right. And you can see that the elementary schools essentially have a building capacity greater than today's enrollment and the projected enrollment going forward. Today, it's close to 280. Going forward, it's just over 400 students. And then, you can see in between the two, between the red boxes is each of those elementary schools that creates the combined total for the elementary schools. So, you have East Auburn, Washburn, Park Ave, Fairview, Walton, and Sherwood Heights. And you can see the different capacities happening there. East Auburn's right about where it should be and kind of continues that way going forward. Washburn right now is under capacity, and I should note, negative means under, plus means over. The, they're just under capacity right now. That grows by about 14 students going forward. Park Ave's a little bit over, and then it corrects itself going forward. Fairview's a little bit over, and then it loses quite a few students going forward, closer to about 80, under capacity. Oops, I'm sorry, I have those reversed. I apologize for that. So, let me, I probably just confused everybody on that one. But essentially, I can see an error in the Walton and Sherwood Heights. Essentially, those are capacity numbers. They're under capacity by those number of students. So, we will correct that before we send, get this posted. And then, in the middle school, you can see that right now, it's slightly over capacity. It becomes under capacity. And then, in the high school, you can see that it is under capacity by about 117, and going forward, we see that number have a significant jump to almost 350 students. And then, we look at where these schools are across Auburn, and we start to plot the location of each of these schools, just to understand the geographic locations, as well as what is overcapacity and undercapacity today. And so, essentially, the undercapacity is, we're really seeing it in Southern Auburn. We see the most capacity at, right now, the highest number of capacity, Sherwood Heights has 187 undercapacity, and Walton has 141 undercapacity, and then every little high school has 117 undercapacity. Everything else is right around 25 or less, whether it be over or under. Something to note is 100% of your MLL students are at one location, and that is Park Avenue. So, that was the first two pieces of data that we collected. The next is we look at your facilities and the condition of your facilities. So, your facility, your, your facilities assessment, overall condition, we do a little bit of what we call a heat map. And so, we're looking at the service life of different systems, whether they be things related to the site and civil-related items, whether they be architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, or fire protection. And the chart in the upper right shows the assessment and condition of each of those and how we've kind of looked at them. Blue means excellent. The system, service life is excellent, doesn't need to be really repaired or replaced for 17-plus years. Good service means that in about 11 to 16 years is when it would need to be addressed. Fair service, next six to 10. Poor service is pretty, pretty imminent in the next one to five years. And then, we've looked, on this chart, we've just noted on the left-hand side, some notes about capacity, and on the right-hand side, the amount of work. So, on the left-hand side, East Auburn has the lowest capacity, and Fairview, and Sherwood Heights, and Walton have the highest capacity. And 100% of ELL population at Park Ave, and that should be MLO. We were corrected on that the other day. The least amount of work needs to happen at Park Ave and the most at Walton. Energy use intensity, the EUI. So, what this looks at is the, the energy unit intensity of each of the schools, so essentially how they are performing. The median EUI for schools is 48.5. We've kind of shown that just below the 50 mark. Per U.S. National Medium Reference Values, and this is based on the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. And so, you can see that a number of the schools are above the median. The lowest-performing school in regards to energy use is Walton, and the others that are above the line, you can see there as well. The one anomaly is East Auburn Community School. It's coming in significantly below. So, we dug a little further, and we believe that that is due to some lack of ventilation that is happening there that needs to be addressed and is on the priority list. And that will impact your energy usage, which is why that one is falling so low. So, that is the energy unit intensity of the schools. Then, looking at existing school data and priority lists. So, we looked at collecting the information for each of these schools. You can see a floor plan, a site plan, as well as some data for each of the schools, whether it be square footage, enrollment, the capacity, square foot per student, the size of the property, the age of the facility, and different things that were noted in our interviews with principals across the district. And so, that was information we were collecting about how they're using the school, things that need to be addressed. And then, we're also looking at this point to see, you know, not knowing what the data's going to present, is there room on the site for an addition, if that would be something that needed to happen? And here at Park Ave, the site most likely cannot accommodate a sizable addition due to the slope and the shape of the property. And then, we have the high, the kind of things that rose to the top in the one to five-year priority list. The thing that rose to the highest right now here is, is electrical items, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but you can kind of see how they're set up. There'll be different bullets that are identified under the different items, and we are getting cost back from our estimator on all of these items as well. So then, we move on to East Auburn Community School. This school is 19,000 square feet, has 155 students. It has capacity for about 118. It is slightly overcapacity right now with a 16.7 acre site, and the building is 95 years old. You can see different concerns that were identified in the conversations with leadership at the schools. And this site could accommodate additions on the play area. The back two-thirds of the site do have steep topography. Several more things on the priority list here regarding paving and accessibility. Looking at some of the structural framing that has been retrofitted over time. Also installing CO2 detection, replacing some electrical panel boards, accessibility in toilet rooms, replacing different equipment in regards to the backflow preventer, and there's lack of sprinklers in the portables. Existing data for Sherwood Heights Elementary School. So, this is 77,250 square feet. Right now, there is 295 students in this school, but it has the capacity of 482. So, this is one of the schools that is significantly undercapacity. There are 53 acres. The facility's about 55 years old. You can see some of the things that were identified by leadership in this as well. And although the site looks and is quite large, additions will be complicated due to the topography. And for anyone that doesn't know what that is, that's the grading and the steepness of the site. Priority list here has quite a few items on it. Some of the similar things to the other school that we just talked about, but site and accessibility items, catch basins, replacing of roof, the, replacing the partitions between the classrooms, replacing ceilings, doors, and door hardware. Some investigation of some existing columns, replacing HVAC units, CO2 detection, electrical panel boards, fire alarm, intercom system, accessibility regarding restrooms, replacing of water heater, water piping, sanitary piping, and sprinkler piping. And again, these are the high-level things. These are the things that we think need to be done in the very near future. So then, we move on to Fairview. Fairview is a similar size. It's about 493 students, capacity of 482, so it's right over, it's just overcapacity. About 10-acre site, and this facility is 25 years old. You can see the list of items from leadership on this as well. And additions would be complicated at this site. There is what's called a land water conservation fund encumbrant. And essentially, what that is, is there was grant funding provided to the site at some point for a certain use that needs to stay for that use. So, in those areas in green, we would need to avoid putting additions or, and do additional research to figure out what was granted in those areas and determine whether we could relocate that somewhere else if an addition was needed here. Fairview priority list, paving and accessibility seems to be almost at all of the schools. The roof needs to be replaced here. Rooftop units need to be replaced. CO2 detection, fire alarm, and intercom systems need to be replaced. Accessibility in toilet rooms, water heater, and water piping. Walton Elementary, this is a 47,000-square-foot school approximately. Enrollment is 152, capacity is 293. So, this is another one of the schools that is significantly undercapacity. It's 11-acre site. This building is approximately 89 years old, and you can see the list of items from leadership on this slide as well. There is room on site for an addition if athletic fields and play area are displaced. However, an addition is not needed at this school at this time due to the capacity. And the list of items here, again, paving, accessibility, there needs to be a security vestibule. We need to install an egress stair. We need to upgrade interior finishes, provide accessible entrance, replace HVAC units, install CO2 detection, replace panel boards, fire alarm system, or fire alarm panel, intercom system. And we also need to address accessibility of toilet rooms, backflow preventer, water heater, water piping, sanitary piping, and sprinkler piping. And those are the items on the one to five-year list. Then, we move on to Washburn. Washburn Elementary School is a 36,000-square-foot school approximately. Enrollment is about 223 students, capacity is 226, so right about where it should be. 4.87-acre site. It is a small site. The building is 73 years old. You can see the list of concerns and items identified by leadership at this school. And the site area may accommodate some additions on the site as it is somewhat flat. And the site area may accommodate some additions on the site as it is somewhat flat. The items at Washburn, upgrade paving and site accessibility, repair leaking roof, repair failing windows, replace unit ventilators, CO2 detection, intercom system, fire alarm panel, accessibility to toilets, backflow preventer, water heater, water piping, and install sprinkler heads in the tech center and nurse area. So that was the elementary schools. And then we move on to the middle school. The middle school is about 85,000 square feet approximately, and there's a 492 students, capacity of 474, so slightly overcapacity right now. 26-acre site and 43 years old. It is, you can see the items identified by leadership for the school. And this is another one where additions would be complicated due to that landwater conservation fund encumbrance. On the next slide, you can see the area in green around the school, which is quite a bit of the area, completely surrounding the school. So if an addition was considered here, we would have to really look at if, what, what was part of that grant, and if those items could be relocated through working with the state and put an addition on this school as well. So Auburn Middle School, paving and site accessibility, replace partitions between classrooms, basement wall crack and water infiltration, install CO2 detection, replace panel boards, accessibility of toilet rooms, replace water piping, and replace hot water system. And then Edward Little High School. This is a brand-new school, 280,000 square feet, enrollment is two, or sorry, 983. The capacity was designed for 1,100 high school students, 240 CTE students, and it is undercapacity at this point. The lot size is 61 acres. It does have a landwater conservation encumbrance on the site. You saw it on the last slide here with the middle school. You can see it in the upper-right corner. When designing and constructing this, we worked closely with the state to essentially relocate that use on the site. There was no assessment done for this, as it's a brand-new school, and there is that, there's the site before the school was built. So that was the facility analysis. We do have a detailed spreadsheet that is being, cost estimated right now to give that five-year plan that's part of what we were asked to do. And all those items in that priority list will have dollar amounts for you guys to be able to plan going forward. So then we move into preliminary options. We're going to share where we are as of today. And these preliminary options explore best use of elementary schools due to projected population decrease. Takes into consideration that enrollment projections cannot predict impact of a new high school in a community. It looks at near-term and long-term considerations. Will take into consideration condition and size of existing schools. The options that are presented are for consideration and discussion, and there's a, there are, sorry, variations of the preliminary options most likely exist. But we really need the district and the school board to address some questions for, for us collectively to really be able to explore some of the long-term solutions. So the near-term solution based on capacity and enrollment is to look at moving Walton students half a mile to Sherwood Heights and closing Walton, as we saw in the projections and the capacity. There is capacity at Sherwood Heights for those students based on today's numbers and what the projections are showing going forward. Long-term solutions are harder without really answering these policy questions, and these policy questions are really for all of you for consideration. And the questions are around organization. What do you want driving the organization of the district and boundaries? Is it to remain the same? Is there something else that wants to be considered? Program locations. Right now, you have MLL students in one school. Do you want to continue that practice, or do you want to explore distributing them throughout the district? And special education services. You have them at certain schools right now. Is that the practice you want to continue, or do you want to explore something else? Age of facilities. There are several facilities that are over 75 years old, or I should say, a couple of facilities that are over 75 years old, and how much money do you want to continue to put into buildings that have aging infrastructure? Grade level configuration? How do you want to organize your schools? Do you want to continue with the grade, you know, configurations that you have now, or do you want to look at other grade configurations and what, what might those be? And then maintenance and portfolios of schools. Do you want to maintain all of these schools? And so it's really, there's, there can be so many options that we can explore and look at, but without really understanding the answers to these, or maybe there's a couple answers that want to be teased out collectively, it's hard to, to really come up with long-term solutions that would be able to address all of your needs. So the next steps, we are working with our cost estimator to get that five-year priority list, and that's going to help you make some decisions budgetary-wise as you're moving forward over the years. We suggest you apply for state funding. We understand, or have heard, that there is a funding cycle coming up next year. We don't know exactly when that is. It has not been shared yet, but we have heard multiple times that there is one next year. It's always great due diligence to get your, your buildings on that list so that you could have assistance with whatever direction you had. Step three, and these are in no particular order, address the questions that we just posed for consideration, and then from there, refine long-term options and examine maintaining, whether you want to maintain the six elementary schools going forward. And that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. School community members, does anyone have any questions for Lisa at this time? Pam?
So I am curious about what the anticipated timeline is for getting the projected costs that are part of this.
Yeah, so our cost estimator is getting those back to us momentarily. We're getting them in parts, you know, there's a lot of schools, so we're getting them in different schools, and we're reviewing them as they come in. So I would say, we would hope to wrap it up by the end of the year to have that information back to you, if not very early next year.
And then my other question is the enrollment study that you mentioned that was done, would we have access to that complete study?
Yes, she is verifying a couple of things for us, and once that, those things have been verified and she has the final summary to it, we will provide that to everyone. Happy to share drafts if, if they're needed as well.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, back to enrollment a little bit. And the dataset that she used, you, you mentioned not including new housing starts. Did she use a dataset from the 2020 U.S. Census as her benchmark, if you would?
I didn't say she didn't use new housing starts. She said they didn't have a significant impact. So she looked at new housing starts. What I don't have with me, and we're hoping to have her clarify, is which projects, future projects or projects permitted, did she look at in this report?
And if we need, just so the board knows, since 2020 to October of 2023, we permitted 406 new housing starts, so it's roughly 3%. We've seen an increase in population for a city of around 1,200 people since 2020. I just want to make sure, and all that data is readily available from Eric Cousins, so, and we have 1,500 in the pipeline. We'll talk more about that later during our debate, but I want to make sure that number has been accounted for. Also, if you could, you know, confirm with us some of the U.S. Census data that we have. For example, we, again, we believe, and there might be some differences here in Auburn that she's extrapolated, that every new house or house unit, if you would, has an average of three individuals and .3 school-age children. And that's a number that we're working off of. So if she has anything else that's different because of this, you know, specific target area, that'd be helpful as well.
Okay. We'll clarify what she's using. I think it might be different, but we'll clarify and make sure that we understand what the differences are and what's included and what's not.
Any other questions? Pam?
Actually, I have a question to kind of piggyback off of the mayor's. There is a neighborhood that's being developed in the area that would be part of Walton. Is that correct?
Yes, maybe. Two, there was two. One was off Flooring Avenue. That was, that zoning that would have made 150 units, and we estimated 50 school-age kids in the Walton District was met with amazing opposition from that neighborhood, and that was unzoned, if you would. So that's one. Vickery is the other one you're referring. We, I'll, I'll find out tomorrow, I think, when I'm in Washington, but we should be getting the, the grant, the federal grant in order to do all the infrastructure, but that still has to be approved by city council and planning board. I, we just, I don't know if that will be or not. We're facing the same opposition. If that was to go through, that'd be probably more heavily child-focused, probably adding another, we think, 75 to 90 school-age children from that one development. But based upon that data, we, I do think we need a lot more growth than just one, one development in New Auburn.
Also, the MLL program, if we were to, you know, direct children to be in their own neighborhood schools, how would that look as opposed to having them all at Park Ave right now?
I would imagine that you would, what we, well, what we need to do is plot where they live and then be able to see what is their sending school, if, if the boundaries remain the same, and we'd be able to determine what that population is. And we'd be able to understand if there would be a significant increase due to that or a minor increase. It would create a opening at the, the school they came from if we're dispersing them. So we'd, we'd have to figure out how do we then, is there another program that goes in there, or does that trigger, you know, looking at boundaries and adjusting those?
Mo, you have the financial report about all of these things that need to be done?
So I was just clarifying, we'll probably have it by the end of the year, early next year.
So by end of year. So my mind always operates in a school year. By end of year, we're talking...
Sorry, calendar year.
Calendar year.
Yep.
Okay, okay. My question is, when was the last facility study done? Do you know when the last facility studies was done? And how are we, if, if so, if we know when the last one was done, how are we now comparing then versus now?
That's my understanding, that it was last done in 2005. Enrollment projections were updated in 2016 for the new high school, and they were done by Rebecca Wondell as well. So it's interesting to see how those projections have now been carried forward.
And a lot has to do with the births and, and some of the early grade impacts that we're seeing.
Okay, all right. Yeah?
Do we have access to the prior facility study and the enrollment study from 2016?
Yes. Yeah, it was just enrollment, it wasn't facilities, but yep.
The facility study from 2005?
Yes.
Is that something that we could all get copies of?
Yes.
For those of you remaining on, absolutely important. Pat?
I have a question, Lisa. You talked about the possible impact of people being drawn to the high school from outside of city limits, but I'm also wondering if they took into consideration any of the migration patterns that are coming, people coming from out of state, people filling up Southern Maine and then going further. Has that been considered?
That's part of it, yeah. So they studied the trends on outmigration and inmigration. So they, they have studied those as part of this.
There, there are no homes to buy, though. There's just, there's no homes on the market for people to move into.
I know that, but I'm talking about if they're seeing anything coming across those hills that surround us.
Any other questions for Lisa?
In, in your report, have you found that any of the facilities that we have are in dire need of, I know you wrote like a one-to-five year, but are there any that are in dire need of repair?
There's, there are a handful of those items we would prioritize in the next year or two, within those one-to-five years. So I don't think, and Steve did a lot of the walkthroughs, there's nothing that is imminent that needs to be addressed like tomorrow, but several of those need to be addressed relatively soon.
Biggest concerns were with Walton School, which is part of the recommendation on why we vacate that building and move children to, is this working?
No, it isn't. You have to hold, sorry.
I gotta get closer. Walton School was the school that was in the worst condition of all that we walked through, so that's part of the reason why we'd recommend vacating that building and moving into Sherwood Heights, which also needs work, but it's a much newer building and would be more worthy of investment.
Did you consider, I didn't hear you talk about transportation as a consideration in thinking about either your recommendations or just, I mean, it has cost implications around.
Absolutely. So it's, it, we see it kind of tied into some of those policy questions we're talking about. So as you're thinking about how is your, your, your district organized, it's something you definitely want to think about in regards to, to transportation. Right now, you, a lot of your schools are central, so, you know, everybody's kind of coming to the same, same place. Buses are going out, collecting, bringing back, going out, collecting, bringing back. So we would want to study that as you look at those long-term solutions and work with your transportation department.
Pam?
Just in regards to the priorities list that you mentioned, and would, would the items on those priority lists that are highest priority, will that be included in the final, in your final recommendations and study?
Everything in the one-to-five lists, one-to-five-year list will have costs, and we would recommend those items be addressed in the next one to five years.
Within the, that one-to-five-year list, though, are there certain items that are higher priority than others?
Yes.
And will that be included in your final?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. At this time, I'm going to exercise chair prerogative, and I'm going to open up public participation to those who would like to speak, now that you've heard the, you've heard the school committee, you have heard the presentation. So members of the public, if you would like to come up and let us know your thoughts and why you're here this evening. So as you come to the podium, some of you, I realize, have probably never been here before. I don't recognize faces over the last four and a half, five years or so. So when you do come to the podium, please just introduce yourself, let us know your name, your address, and typically your affiliation with the Auburn School Department. And it could be, I'm a taxpayer, or I'm a parent of children at such-and-such school. So also because of the amount of people who are here this evening, I am going to invoke about a three limit, a three-minute time limit depending on if we have, Dr. Doris, how many folks do we have signed up? About 15? Okay, so I will have a, put a three-minute time limit on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you could, just before we do this, could we, could you go through, or maybe the superintendent go through? Yeah, we're having public comment on this topic.
Yeah.
But make sure you clarify the order that's further on the agenda. This isn't a vote to close the school.
It is not.
And I'm not, could you just explain that, because I might fundamentally send their questions.
So I want you, and I think it's important for folks to know here tonight, there is not one motion on this table that is going to close Walton School this evening. There is an opportunity for us to take the information that we have been presented and to make decisions based on the facts and the information that we now have. It is my recommendation that this school committee form an ad hoc committee to take a look at all of the information that we have just been given, and to use the questions that were offered up there as your, essentially, your policy questions for consideration as the, the catalyst for the conversations that need to happen. I would strongly recommend that members of the community are involved in this type of an ad hoc committee. It would be certainly led by someone from the school committee with lots of questions to answer. So I think that's important to know. I do thoroughly understand that the wording of the motion coming up at the very end is, is concerning, and so I think we have a way to address that as well. But it has been a long time since we have had a facility study done. We need to make sure we're making decisions that, that are, that are right for our community or that are the best decisions going forward for the future. So at this time, I will, I think, hope that helps to explain some of that. There's no vote to close Walton School this evening. So with that being said, sir, thank you for coming this evening.
No problem. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Ryu. I live at 85 Mary Carol Street, and my grandson is in the third grade at Walton School. So thank you for that clarification on, on the wording. The fact that it says that the vote is going to be to transition, to have a committee formed to transition the closing of Walton School makes me feel like we're closing Walton School. Also, because my grandson goes there, I'm kind of privy to... I'm kind of privy to the scuttlebutt that's been going on there. And one of the fears that I have is that about two years ago, some of the things at Walton School stopped being repaired, and then Mr. Davis, our principal, all of a sudden left. And so we have had a feeling in the Walton School community like something was up for quite some time. And I don't know if that reflects in your assessment of how things are repaired at the school, or what things need to be replaced. I don't know if those things have been put on the back burner, because in the back of people's minds, it is very obvious to us that there's been a plan to close Walton School for some time. And so maybe we're unduly in disrepair, and I would like you to consider that. But the most important reason I'm up here tonight is because this is the last meeting of this school board, and thank you very much for serving. I was a city councillor back in nineteen ninety-one, so I've sat there, and I know, I know what the grilling is all about. So as the last meeting of your school board, you are making a decision that is going to put the brand-new school board in a state of chaos on day one, when they sit in your seats. And even more importantly, the chaos is going to even be exacerbated, because our superintendent is either retiring or moving on to another, another place, and we're going to have a new superintendent. And we have a new city council. We have a whole bunch of new stuff happening, some of it next week and some of it in June. So I would ask, could we please put this decision off until, number one, we have a new leader and our superintendent? And number two, we have a city, a school board that has had a few months under their belt to understand how these decisions are going to impact our entire community. Again, I thank you very much for your hard work, but making this decision tonight as you exit and never come back to this seat, to me, seems like it's a very wrong thing to do for the city of Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryu.
Hi.
Hello, my name is Colleen Ryu, and I live at eighty-five Mary Carroll Street, right across from the school. And my grandson goes to Walton, as my children did. I have a letter from Leroy Walker. He's on his way to Washington, so he asked me to read this letter for him. It's regarding the closing of Walton School. Dear school superintendent and school committee members, excuse me, I am writing this letter because I will be out of state on Wednesday tonight. I am having this read by, read to you so that you will know my feelings about the possible closure of Walton School in New Auburn. I want you to know that I am against the closure of Walton School for many reasons. Walton School is a lifeline to New Auburn. If the school is closed, it will be a disaster for bringing new life to New Auburn. If we bring more housing to New Auburn, that will bring more students, and we would have to cram them into our existing, already crowded schools. This would be devastating for the students, because they will not get the attention they need from the teachers, who already have too many students. When schools close in a community, it is only a matter of time before the community deteriorates. No one moves into the area because there are no adequate schools for their children. Walton School offers students a playground with a brand-new playground equipment, an athletic field, a gym, an auditorium with a stage, and many other amenities, like the skating rink, basketball court, and cafeteria that would be lost. This could impact the students as well, because they will be taken out of the school that they are familiar with and bused to a different school. I already had calls and met with people who own property in the area, and they do not want the school to close. Even though they don't have any more children going to Walton, they want to see Walton School continue to operate in their neighborhoods. As a newly re-elected city councillor of Ward Five, I support the people in my ward, and I want to reiterate their concerns. Thank you for your anticipated consideration. Leroy Walker. Thank you very much.
Thank you for reading his letter. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you. Marissa Morrow, Auburn resident and teacher at Edward Little High School, and also the president of the Auburn Education Association. After hearing the presentation, I guess my biggest question was, what is the definition of capacity that the architects are giving us? Is it just simply the number of bodies that can fit into a school building without violating the fire code, or is it the number of students and staff that can effectively deliver and safely deliver education? I bet those are two very different things, if I had to guess. And probably the architects don't have the second definition in the way that we do. We know what it takes to deliver safe and effective education, and it's not cramming a lot of students into one classroom. Combining two high-needs schools could really be a recipe for disaster. Twenty to twenty-five students today is not what twenty to twenty-five students in a classroom used to be ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. There are significant academic and behavioral needs that really take a lot more attention and, you know, time and responsibility on the part of the teacher. Also, Sherwood Heights has a unique design to its building. They have kind of oddly-shaped classrooms that kind of dump into a common area. It makes it hard to have large classes there without kind of disrupting some of the other goings-on in some of the other rooms. Additionally, multilingual learners, when they join our school department, they have a very unique set of needs. I have received three new students in one week, and in my nineteen years of teaching, I don't think I've ever received three new students in a year. Two of those students do not speak any English whatsoever. Lucky for me, they speak Spanish, but that's a whole other story, that's a whole other thing. They do not have winter coats. They came from a tropical climate. They don't have anything for winter. They, you know, are trying to get used to a new school. They're going to need interpreting. So they really have a whole set of needs that, that puts a lot of responsibility on the teacher. I know Park Ave has been enrolling multilingual learners like crazy lately, and, and so they can't just go anywhere. Like, they, they have a very unique set of needs. So I know we're, we're talking about Walton, but I'm, I'm trying to emphasize the fact that every time we get new students, it is that much more stress and that much more responsibility on the teachers. We are also understaffed in a lot of buildings, and we are having to cover for teachers. We don't have substitute teachers, so that in itself is also increasing our responsibility on a day-to-day basis, giving up our planning periods, which sometimes makes us also give up our lunch period. So to have a class of twenty-five students rather than a class of twenty students would be that much more on our shoulders. And I'm saying our, I don't teach at an elementary school anymore, but I'm speaking for my fellow elementary teachers. So I would ask that you kind of table the decision, or any, I know you're not making a decision tonight, but table any decision for this year and wait to see what our ELL, our multilingual learner population does, and what our new housing developments do in the next couple of years, because I know it, the, the architects claim that there's not going to be a significant impact, but do we really know that for sure? And, and what is that definition of capacity and impact? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Frazier, and I live at ninety-nine Harvard Street in Auburn. I have a student, a child, at Walton Elementary. As I mentioned, I'm a property owner and business owner in Auburn, and contribute to the tax base from both. I'm a parent of a Walton student who receives services, including speech therapy and occupational therapy, assistance with reading and math in small breakaway groups currently that are led by aides, and I have pretty limited confidence that his needs would be met to the same standard as the class sizes and student population would fill Sherwood Heights to capacity if they were to be combined. And as, it's already been mentioned, the physical space does not equal quality education, so filling it to capacity is, there are multiple implications there. My son happens to have particular difficulty with transitions, and a change to another elementary school next year would mean a change in school for sixth grade, and then a change in school to seventh and eighth grade, and then another school change for high school, which would be three changes in four years, would be extremely detrimental to his education. I, he would lose a lot of ground. As quoted in the Sun Journal earlier this week, Superintendent Brown stated that she wants people to look at the entire picture, which is impossible to do without transparency. We've been asking for the entire picture since early, at, at least early September, when I last addressed the committee regarding the removal of the assistant principal, which was another kind of clear indicator that the rumors that have been circulating since at least last spring were likely true. There's been lack of transparency regarding the plans for Walton, and it, it seems as though the families and staff of Walton are only getting the information you want us to have and when you want us to have it, yet you want us to consider the entire picture. We're not receiving that. When the staff asked Superintendent Brown regarding the rumors, they were told, you never know what could happen. That's the opposite of transparency, I feel. Our, our, the, the Harriman website boasts that people are the heart of everything we do, and we view every project as an opportunity to enhance the well-being of our communities, and the best solutions emerge from a collaborative process. It, as a parent and a person in the community, the taxpayer, it doesn't feel very collaborative at all. I also question the conflict of interest. I mean, didn't they just build our high school? It, it doesn't seem quite right either. In closing, our students and educators deserve better. I don't think this has been handled well so far. I'm hoping that changes. The families of Walton, the residents of Auburn, and the educators and beyond Auburn will be watching and holding every move the school committee makes up to the light, and making sure that you are transparent moving forward. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Hello, my name is Cameron Goldrup. I live at nine forty-eight Paddle Road in Auburn, and I go to Walton School. I am a fifth grader at Walton Elementary. I want Walton to stay open, because with twenty-two other kids, and it is very hard for me and my teacher to work. If Walton closes and we merge with Sherwood, class sizes will go up and my education will go down. I've been a Walton Owl since kindergarten. I have lots of memories that include friends, amazing teachers, helping my mom make staff, make stuff for staff, also school events like bingo, trunk-or-treat, music productions, chorus nights. My favorite part of Walton is that we are one big happy family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, young man. Thank you. Do we have our next individual? Actually, we have, do you still have the mic?
My name is Simon Ugle. I live at thirty Barton Avenue. Walton is special in a way. They have great teachers. We have a hundred forty-six kids. We might be losing stuff, but kids are having fun. If you shut it down, then you will ruin a bunch of kids' fun.
Thank you, buddy.
It does.
Yep, swing it down.
My name is Timothy, and I live at thirty Barton Avenue. I'm a kid at Walton, and I had a super fun year at Walton. And not just this year, but all the years. My little brother's having fun, too. If you shut down Walton, I don't think there's anything that can replace it. We've lost a lot of things, like a principal, two times, and teachers. If you do this, then it'll only add to the sadness of our school. If you shut down Walton, where will we go? All the schools could be full. Please don't shut down Walton. Before this, we got sixty-eight honks from random people to support Walton.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ugle. I live at thirty Barton Avenue. I'm a parent of the last two kids who just spoke. They go to Walton. I'm part of the PTO and also a substitute teacher at Walton. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the school board members who returned our many emails of concern over the last few days, and who asked us to come and share our thoughts in person tonight. I've heard the school board talk many times about data and numbers, so I'd like to give you a few important numbers tonight about who and what is at stake in the decisions made here. One hundred forty-six, the number of students who call Walton their school. That number may seem small compared to schools like Park Ave and Fairview, but our smallness is one of our greatest assets in meeting the individual needs of our students. Around thirty, the number of staff at Walton who choose to pour their hearts out to teach and care for our kids, often facing impossible challenges and heart-wrenching realities that come from working in a high-poverty school. And yet, they rise to meet those challenges and somehow find ways to improve those realities. One hundred and thirty, the number of students and families who attended our annual Turkey Beano last month, and filled our gym with talking and laughing and memories. Two, the number of elementary schools in Auburn who are lacking either a kitchen or a gymnasium or both. Fortunately, at Walton, we are equipped with both, and we make very good use of them. Ten, the span of years where Walton has received new floors, lockers, drop ceilings, heat pumps, bleachers, press box, bus loop fence, and a brand-new playground. These investments would be lost if Walton ceased to be a school. Three to two, the score of just one of many casual soccer games that are played on Walton's field by informal neighborhood leagues. The AMS football team also practices there after school. Twenty twenty-one, the year that Walton's pre-K program was shut down and moved to Sherwood Heights, also meaning the loss of many future students. Twenty twenty-two, the year that Walton's wings program was moved to Fairview, further decreasing our student population and relocating several beloved teachers and students. Seventy-five to ninety, the number of kids projected to come from the Winter Oaks housing development on Vickery Road. These kids would be in the Walton School District, and we would like them to have a school to go to. Nineteen thirty-three, the year that Walton was built. It has adapted to the educational needs of our city for decades. All that this beautiful building has ever needed was some creative and resourceful minds who understood the needs of our students. You happen to have a room full of them tonight. Over one hundred and fifty, the number of years that Harriman has been in business. That's a lot of experience, and they have given us some very useful insights tonight. But Harriman's recommendations are only one piece of the puzzle, and they should be weighed as such in deciding the future of our schools. And the final number I'll share with you, two hundred and sixty-nine. It's the number of signatures that we've collected in the last forty-eight hours from parents, staff, and community members who do not support the closure of Walton School. And given more time, I'm confident that number would be much higher. Please listen to all of the people here tonight. Their future is at stake. Their future is at stake, and that deserves much more time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Chris Ugle. I live at 30 Barton Avenue, like the last three. So what I really wanted to express tonight is, you know, I just want to make sure that, and I appreciate the decision to want to explore this report more. I really do. I think that that's really what's needed, is to really look into it and determine what are the differentiators and what is needed and what is potential for coming down the line. My fear is that we might do something like Westbrook did, where they jumped too quickly to close a school, and now they're paying for it later, as many of you probably are aware. So again, I think that this isn't something that we want to necessarily jump to too lightly. And it seems that, based on what I'm hearing, I appreciate that that seems to be the sentiment as well. Additionally, I think that it's important to take into account, my wife mentioned, you know, there are resources for our buildings that go beyond the number of students you can shove in a classroom. And that includes things like larger gyms, cafeteria system that's available. And I know that those are things, you know, playgrounds and things of that nature that are very valuable to the students that go to those schools beyond just how many can be in the room with the teacher at a time. And how many teachers you can fit in. You know, I think that taking all of these things into account is an important aspect of when you're going to be making these decisions. So again, I appreciate the desire to make a committee, and I appreciate that you are seeming to go in the direction of looking into these things more. And I just want to give you my thanks for taking all of these things into account. And I agree with what my wife said, that we really appreciate the work that has been done on this report, but I think it's a piece of a much larger puzzle that we need to put together.
Thank you. To form the committee.
Hi, I'm Marley Coches, and I live at 217 Seventh Street. And I'm a student at Walton School. Walton has felt like my second home ever since I started school, and I don't want that to end. Walton makes me feel really happy and safe because the teachers are really nice, and same goes for the kids. The thoughts of closing Walton makes me feel really sad. Walton would be getting rid of lots of new activities. Where would all the kids go? Lots of schools are already full.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, I'm Lucy Coches. I live at 217 Seventh Street. I'm a parent of Marley. And I also have a high school student that also went to Walton, and I work for the Auburn School Department. So obviously, I'm here to share my concerns, which I have many, but I'm just going to focus on three of them tonight. Walton is a really small school with a really big heart. Closing this school would be devastating to our neighborhood. Not only do we host 15 to 20 family events every year at Walton, we have a couple of fields and a great walking track that's used by hundreds of people a week. I watch them walk by my window every day. There also has been a significant lack of transparency going into this study. As a community, we want to have the facts. Maybe we're wrong. I don't think so, but we could be. But we haven't had access to the study. And it makes it really hard for us to not come at this from a place of passion for our school and to look at it objectively, because we haven't had those numbers. The agenda item made it sound like this was a done deal, and that's just not okay with us. Our facilities, yeah, a lot of them are run down. And they've become that way because for as long as I can remember, even before I started working in Auburn, we've always had the zero-budget increase. And that left our administration to have to think, are we going to put more money into fixing our facilities so they're safe for our students? Or are we going to put that money into our classrooms so our teachers have what they need to teach our children? So yeah, our buildings, they're run down. And I think we can all take the fall for that. I mean, we had to put our money where we thought it was most effective. And my last concern is that Auburn has an educator shortage. It's not a secret. It's not something that we just have here in Auburn. But closing a school is not a good look when you're trying to attract new teachers, some ed techs, new staff. I need you guys to remember that just because we have all these vacant positions doesn't mean that they're not needed. You have teachers that are working extremely hard. You have ed techs that are doing three and four times the amount of work that they should be doing because we don't have the staff. So just because the position is vacant doesn't mean it is not needed. I think it's really important that we remember that. So Walton has been serving as an overflow for some of our other schools, like Park Ave, that has too many students in it. And all of our elementary schools are understaffed. So I don't want the school board to look at the Walton staff as fill-ins to stick on our, in our other schools where there's an opening. Our Walton staff has a job, and their job is to teach our students in their community school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Doris, who do we have next?
Hi, I'm Renell Pollard. I have been a teacher at Walton for 25 years, teaching kindergarten and first grade. And I'm reading this statement from all of the Walton staff. Good evening, Sherwood. Good evening, school board members and Mr. Mayor. The Walton Elementary School members are here today to express our great displeasure and disappointment in reference to the school committee's notes this weekend, specifically Section E of the new business. Over the last few years, we have been hearing whispers from people that come in and out of our building about people wanting to close our school. As in the game telephone, there were rumors that were constantly changing a bit. They were going to give it another year, two years, or three. They want to sell Walton off and turn the land into apartment buildings. The list just went on and on. In our recent meeting with Superintendent Brown, when our beloved new vice principal, Benan Wood, was moved to another school, the conversation quickly turned to ask if we were trying to close us. We were given no straight answers, no ideas of who could possibly help. We were just told, you never know what this report might say. Maybe the schools would be redistricted. Maybe we'd see K schools and three, six schools in Auburn. It was just brushed off. Our concern is the process. If we were waiting to hear what the report might say, why was it already talked about Walton closing? If the school board members weren't going to see the report until Wednesday, why was there already a motion to form a committee anticipating our closure? Reports like this, decisions like this, when they affect kids, staff, and a community like this, things should not be rushed. This report should be digested a bit, not just by the people at Auburn Hall and select few who got an early access. The staff members who put in much of their time and effort in making Walton and the Auburn School Department the great place that it is should have time to read and reflect. The staff members of Sherwood Heights and other district schools who will have, face a huge uptick in student needs should have a chance to read and reflect. Our parents and our community as a whole should have a chance to read and reflect. These are the same things we ask our students to do each day. Why would this be different? Quite frankly, as a whole, we felt very disrespected. There's been no transparency in this process. We were given no voice and very limited time to even process what happened over the last few days. We haven't even seen the entire report that everyone else has been talking about to look at. We've also been hearing some of what might be in the report. Again, this is just hearsay and rumors, but we wanted to mention it. Some of the things we are hearing are items that have already been fixed many in the last few years. Please take the time to review the report and the people who have been going through with the updates. These are some of the reasons that we want to be able to read and reflect on this report. We are asking you all today to vote no to forming such a committee. This report should be shared with the community as a whole. It should be given some time to think about what it says and the next steps. Then and only then should a committee be formed for the anticipation of anything, whether it's a school closure, a balancing of student population, or anything else. We have lots of ideas and ways to think we can help to solve this and the issues Auburn may be facing. We want to keep the Auburn School Department and the city of Auburn on the positive path they've been on the last few years. Please let us be part of the process before you talk about closure. Respectfully, Walton staff. And we've signed it.
Thank you. I'm not doing anything other than just this. Sit back, relax, and listen.
Hello, my name is Ella. I live on 22 Vivian Street, Auburn, Maine. I was once a Walton Owl and always will be a Walton Owl. I went to Walton Elementary School from pre-K through sixth grade. I would like to share my view on why Walton should stay open. First, I would like to address some of the students in this school. Many of these kids have hard home lives and seek comfort solely in their friends and sometimes teachers. If we were to close Walton, many of these friendships will be torn apart as they now have to go to different schools. Some of these children with issues at home will feel as if they have no one to talk to and nobody to brighten their day. On the topic of students' emotions, there are some students, like myself, who find it quite difficult to have a big change. Some of the, for some students, they will have, they will have been going here for, with the same people for many years. These kids will have to learn to adjust to a whole new building, whole new teachers, and maybe have to make whole new friends. This is especially hard for those who have stress at home or anxiety. Also, imagine what it would be like for someone who fits more than one of the categories I mentioned. It would be a nightmare. On a similar note, the teachers of Walton, if it theoretically does close, will most likely be forced into a different position, be cast aside, and many of them will leave Auburn entirely. With current staffing shortages recently mentioned by the school board, we cannot afford to lose these teachers. As a former student of this school we speak of tonight, I know for a fact there are many things that a Walton student will remember forever. For example, the pie day assembly, the bingo games played twice a year, beating Sherwood at the Charlie Chowder Challenge, and the Walton Family Barbecue. These fun activities are part of what keeps some kids excited and motivated to learn. Every year, students from Walton have watched the seniors march down the hall in their cap and gown, thinking that one day they will also march down the same hall that countless other graduates have walked down before receiving their diploma. If Walton were to close, six years' worth of Walton graduates, including myself and my sister, would walk the halls of schools they never went to, congratulated by teachers they never had. For all these reasons and more I have not mentioned, please keep Walton Elementary School open. Understand that no matter how appealing this looks from where we are, the grass is greener where you stand.
Thank you. Dr. Doris, who do we have next?
I'll try to talk. I've lost my voice a few times. My name's Julie Carpenter. I'm a resident of Auburn for 26 years now. And I have worked for Auburn schools for 23 years. And I have a couple questions that I think need to be looked into, as I think some people have alluded to. What type of class sizes were you looking at with capacity? Like if there's a classroom, how did they determine the capacity of the classroom? Were the portable units included in the capacity? Because those are not necessarily the best use of space. And some of the things I would like to say, that I have worked in every school in Auburn over my 23 years, and so I have a very unique perspective. I've worked in special education, so I know what all the programs are like at the different schools. I worked with the MLL population quite a bit, so I know the unique challenges. If there is going to be a committee formed, I would love to sit on that committee because I think I checked all the boxes of knowledge about the district. And a couple of things that I think really need to be considered, that there are some schools there that don't have a cafeteria, they don't have a gym, or they have, they share them and they're too small. They don't have specialist spaces. They don't have all the things that they really, that really are needed in a school. Another thing to consider is the design of Sherwood. It was designed with the pod design that was popular back, I don't know, I thought it was like in the 70s. But maybe that, and it's a very, it's just, it's very difficult, the way that we now teach and the way that classrooms are used. It's different, you have to walk through one classroom to get to another classroom. You have this pod area, and they'll have group things out there that impact everybody else in that pod. And I know this because I work in one of those pods, so it's, it's not really conducive. We have some high needs in some of our schools, and cramming 20, 20, 25 kids in a classroom, not necessarily the best idea. And one thing I do want to say about Walton, I was transferred to Walton about five years ago. It's my first time working there. Of all the schools in the Auburn District, it is the most community I've ever seen in a school. It's, you see so much engagement from families. The staff works as a family. It's, it's just something I think that will be lost if that school is closed.
Thank you. Hi there, welcome.
Hi. My name's Bruce Neto. I live at 14 Truman Avenue in Auburn. I was on the school committee for seven and a half years back in the 90s. Mayor Levesque, that was the 1990s, not 1890. I know he looks at me as being real old. I want to talk about two things, because you only have three minutes. I'm going to try to be impactful as I can with the three minutes I have and bring a different perspective than what we've heard already. Excellence in competition. We voted, the residents of Auburn voted a few years ago for a state-of-the-art flagship high school. Not because we wanted mediocre education, but because we wanted excellent education. We believe that we will have one of the best systems in the state. And that excellent education will help attract what we need the most, citizens. All of us chose Auburn. Many of us, I did, because of the educational system when I was starting out much younger and before I had my children. What I haven't heard tonight is how closing Walton makes us more competitive to attract the people that we need, which is the younger people and the people with families as we go forward. I did not hear that this evening. If we are able to achieve our objective of excellence in education as being one of the top education systems in the state, we'll be attracting people from all over surrounding communities, from outside the state, that will want to come here because they're most precious, precious resources, most precious item on the planet, their children, that want to be taught by our system. And to do that, we have to have excellence, and we have to be able to be competitive. We can take Walton out, but the footprint, the buildings, the community will still remain. And that community was built for families. We need to bring the families back. Hopefully, in the near future, we will retain Walton, and we will not close it. And we'll be looking at maybe expanding Walton as an elementary school, because out of all the schools that I saw listed tonight, it appears that Walton's the best suited for expansion. So I just want you to think, take a pause. I certainly echo what Bruce Rio said. Take a pause for a moment. This is an incredibly important decision, not just, it's not the numbers. It's our ability to compete and our ability to retain excellence as we go forward. I ask you to think very hard, hard about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Doris, do we have anyone else who would like to come speak this evening, signed up?
I'm here to talk about something different, but I feel compelled to say something. My name is Laura Garcia. I live at 20 Skilling's Corner Road in Auburn. I am a taxpayer and also a parent. I am a taxpayer and also a parent of a soon-to-be graduate, but I'm done with the Auburn School Department. But what I wanted to just comment on listening tonight, people are talking about a community at Walton. And we can build beautiful new buildings all day long, state-of-the-art, but it doesn't replace community. And along those lines, I would like to say that the first time I went into the new high school was for parent-teacher conferences. And while I was struck by the building, the enormity of it, it's beautiful, I missed the old EL. Because when I go into the old EL, I had an immediate sense of the community that lived in those hallways day in and day out. Not only in that day, but in the days that preceded it and knew the kids that would be coming in too. It was the artwork on the walls, it was the records here, it was the banner for something a class had done. And now what I hear from students is, we're not allowed to put anything up on the walls. We're not allowed to do this, we're not allowed to do that. Because it's a new building and I understand it. We, we need to care for our assets as a community. Um, and I do know that part of what happened with the old EL was we very quickly said, oh, we're going to be building a new one, and we stopped maintaining it. Um, and a lot of kids went through that school when it was not really cared for very well. But I think that in our rush to kind of the brightest, newest, shiniest things to fix what ails education, we need to remember at the core of education is communities of people. And without that, the buildings don't really mean anything. And then just as a little side note, I'm kind of chuckling because we spent a lot of money on that new state-of-the-art building. And, uh, I noticed that the capacity, that we're like a couple hundred under and we're now being told by the same architectural company that made those plans, that the projected enrollment is doing this. So are we going to have a school, a high school that's supposed to be for 1,100 students and we're going to have 700 students? Wasn't a very good use of money then, I would say, especially when I saw all the lists for all our, our elementary schools, community schools where kids walk and play. Again, it's about community. I'll be back on the other subject.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else who would like to come speak to the school committee on this subject this evening? All right, seeing none, and I'm also noting the time. And as an educator in a grade three, four school, and you've taken a peek at the kiddos who have come to speak to us, and I think of things like homework and get home and bedtime and all that good stuff. Um, I'm going to use chair prerogative to actually move the motion, which was under new business. Um, the motion to form a transition committee. Right now it's called for the anticipation of elementary school closure. I do not like the name of that committee whatsoever. Um, but I'm going to move it up right now for a vote and a discussion so that you folks can hear uh, school committee's conversation around that as well. So at this point, I'm going to uh, call for a motion to form a transition committee for the anticipation of Walton Elementary Closure. Do I have?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second up.
Thank you. Open it up for Brian.
Uh, yeah, I would actually like to make a motion for an amendment, uh, changing the name of the committee, uh, from transition committee for the anticipation of Walton Elementary Closure to an ad hoc facilities advisory committee. So, um, I appreciate all the comments from everybody in Walton. It's, it's interesting to hear the community, and I've been in Auburn for a short time. But I think as the new board comes on, uh, as we all saw, there's a huge report. There's a lot of things that have to be done. It's not just Walton, it's Sherwood Heights, it's Park, it's all our schools. And I think our best use and setup for the new board is to, is to establish that committee so that they can look at the report, they can prioritize, they can make recommendations, and that committee will be, you know, comprised of, you know, board members, staff, city members, residents, um, and make informed decisions. But I think it's important that we change the name. And again, to ad hoc facilities advisory committee. Ad hoc because it's just a temporary, it's, it's more of a temporary committee. Uh, but it's important to have that committee, I think. And then it'll cover all the facilities, not just Walton.
So there's an amendment on the floor. I will second that. Um, I'll open that part up for a conversation to the name change. Go ahead, Pam.
Yep.
Um, thank you, Brian. You're pretty much going along with the notes I had for tonight. This is the first time that the whole board has seen this report. I had not seen it until tonight and I appreciate the work that Harriman has done. I think what you've suggested, Brian, is what should have been done in the first place. We need to analyze the whole report. We need to prioritize, we need to do a lot of soul searching and a lot of thinking and answering those questions that you asked as bylaws. And so I'm definitely going to support the change.
Any other comments on the amendment?
Yes.
Um, I, I feel we should table this for the new committee and wait till we get all the information. Because we don't have, you know, how can you make a decision and have a committee with not all the information? We don't have the statistics, uh, we don't have everything.
Point of order, we can't, we can't make a motion to table during a motion to amend. And I'd, I'd appreciate and I don't disagree with that motion, that if that motion is made, it's made till everybody has a chance to make some amendments to the initial motion on the floor that, uh, uh, board rep, Belknap has made.
So right now we're working with Brian's amendment with the, to the change. There's been a second on that, it's opened up the conversation a little bit to that. Any other conversations on the amendment that Brian has made? Yes.
So I definitely agree that, that the, the name of the original committee was unfortunate. And it definitely needs to be a whole picture, holistic view, um, committee. It's, I mean, I think it's inevitable that a committee will need to be formed in order to review all of the information that was presented or, and that we will ultimately have in the final report. So I think that that's just in preparation of setting up our new committee, um, to be prepared to look at that report. I, I don't think that that's in any way indicating any sort of decision that will be made. I think that the entire report, once it's completed, um, especially with all of the cost estimates, um, needs to be thoroughly, transparently reviewed and, like Brian said, with a committee that is comprised of school committee members, staff, community members, um, and certainly not a rushed process by any means.
Thank you. Any other comments on the name change?
Uh, comments on actually the makeup, uh, I want to commend, uh, member, uh, Belknap for mentioning who he did mention. I'd also give recommendations on the committee to include a member of the planning and permitting department, so more accurate, timely information on development, when, where, how, what size could be included. I'd also recommend having a planning board member on this as well because they can provide some valuable insight on future growth, which is their purview. The planning board is there to create the comprehensive plan. Um, that comprehensive plan was created in 2021. That's going to influence some of that conversation.
Thank you. All right, this time I'm going to call for a vote on the name change of the, oh, sorry, Pam.
I just have a question, so this motion, sorry, I was in the loo. Um, so I didn't get the first part of the motion. But is it just for the name change? Is that all we're doing right now?
Simply changing the name to what it should be with the intent to look and examine the entire report in pieces now, when they get to full, make recommendations. But, you know, thoughtful, you know, looking at it thoughtful, like, um, Ms. Albert said. It's just making the, making sure that there is a committee in place, so when the new board comes on next week, it's already in motion. Because there are some things that are very critical and important that have to be addressed outside of Walton. Um, and having that committee start kind of thinking about that and, you know, like, like the mayor said, you know, whether it's planning board members, other members, city officials. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be a good-sized committee. But this is just to change the name so that we can establish the committee so that it can move forward.
Okay, because I think it's, you know, as Pam said, I think it's very important that we have all stakeholders involved in this decision. Because not only does it affect Walton, even though unfortunately, according to the agenda, Walton was kind of the target of the transition in this committee. But I can tell you, this is the first time I've heard the Harriman report and I've been anxious to hear it. Um, and I have not made any decision. Um, and I don't think anybody on this board has either. I think that we all need to be part of this solution as a community, as, um, parents and students and faculty. Um, we all need to be part of this. Um, and I think the renaming of it as an advisory committee, an ad hoc advisory committee would also have everybody be at the table. We all need a seat at the table and I think this would allow everyone to have a seat at the table so that they, we can all make the right decision, the thoughtful decision, a holistic decision that's right for our community and our students.
I would, I would also recommend to, you know, whoever the new chair is and the new board, that this just becomes a standing committee, just like we report out for finance and we report out for curriculum, we report out for, we had the building, the building committee meeting. This becomes just another standing meeting that, or a, a standing committee that reports out on, you know, meets on a whatever regular basis and, and again, reports out just like anything else for transparency and so everybody's involved.
Thank you, Brian. Um, so when, I think one of the reasons, uh, thinking forward is that in January, that is when subcommittee, um, subcommittee appointed, um, happen. So that is when, so this is why we need, there's sort of a sense of urgency, so when the new school committee comes on, they can be appointed. So, and that again happens in January. So with that, I'm going to call for a motion for, uh, sorry, for a vote for the name change. All those in favor? Brian, would you repeat it one more time, please?
Yep, an amendment to change the name to ad hoc facilities advisory committee.
Okay, and that has been seconded and discussed, so all those in favor? All right, motion is, uh, approved. Next is now, and I'm going to have Dr. Brown report it. Now I'm going to call for a motion to form, so we've changed the name, now we're going to form a, say it again, Brian?
A committee known as the ad hoc facilities advisory committee.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Pat. Brian's second. Any discussion on that? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of things, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what a lot of the residents were saying. Basically, repeat everything that Bruce Neto said. Um, and he, he's spot on, that's just something that we've been working on for six years. I want to let people in the audience and everyone know, the enrollment data is no surprise. Every year we look at declining enrollment, we're looking at house starts, we're looking at this. And from a city council perspective and school board, for the two years I've been here, uh, neighborhood schools are a priority. We want them, we need them, but we have to justify them with students. And hence, some of them are controversial rezoning efforts that we've done. Now, all those efforts have worked to this point. In three years, we've had 406 new house starts or permitted, ready to go, at varying degrees. 1,200 a person increase for our population, but also we've had 1,500 that we've brought into the pipeline. That means they're not permitted, they haven't been approved, um, they are in the pipeline. That pipeline constantly gets refreshed. We are working at bringing new homes as a point of interest. There's only 61 houses for sale in the entire city of Auburn right now. That's woefully under what a healthy level of for-sale homes are in any community. So we do need to build more too, as Bruce so well said, attract excellence. Victory is one of them, lowering could have been one. I will say this though, if you're, if we're passionate about neighborhood schools, that means we have to be passionate about enrollment. I heard for the last six years that our schools are overflowing, just as recently as three months ago, that they're overflowing and we can't have any new development anywhere because we don't have room. Thankfully, this data, unfortunately I should say also, shows that we have plenty of room. You know, according to my calculations, we'll have room for another 3,000 homes by 2033. Okay, that's what our need will be to maintain our current, um, enrollment data as of 2023, uh, using census information, that's 300 homes. So, with that said, if we start hearing, and I, this is really to the public, not to this board, if you start hearing the word moratorium on housing, anywhere in the city of any type, that is the death knell for neighborhood schools. Not just Walton, it could be any one of them, it could be multiple. Developers will leave. They want regulatory consistency. If they feel from elected officials, there is no regulatory consistency, they will not build. You will not have kids and we will not have the neighborhood schools that we have today. So that's my cautionary statement out to the public on that one. Um, and I just got to, you know, these are hard decisions, but rightsizing, a downward spiraling company, if you would, you know, using that analogy for Auburn, is one of the toughest things anybody can go through, but it is avoidable. And I hope it is. We also need that tax base to pay for, if we do keep Walton available, we'll need to generate additional tax dollars either from current residents or from new development to pay for this. So those are the other factors we got to keep in consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment?
Thanks a lot to everyone who came in to speak. I really, I wish it was always like that because that's when I really get to learn about what's going on. Um, so I, we, I didn't, I also, this is the first time I've heard any of this report and this is the first time I've ever heard, um, conversations about the idea of Walton closing. I just wanted, that was the one thing I really wanted to clarify because it's not a trend, at least not, yeah, there's, I think there's just, so it's the first time. So with that, I really appreciated the report's emphasis on what, what the school board's job is in terms of thinking about these policy things. And I think the formation of a committee has to come with somewhat of a clear charge. And I think the charge that was articulated in the slides is, um, those questions to look at. But I think in addition to that, a really important thing, when we first talked about doing this study, was looking at educational equity and sort of how, how is the schools we have related to equity in education? And, um, I think that needs to be there for the committee. And I think looking at transportation logistics is really important. And, um, I guess because Brian said that, um, and I also think the role of, one thing that came up today, especially with a young woman, whose name I can't remember, is the role of schools beyond just being a classroom. So the, the role of schools as a community, not even as a community, but literally for kids, for diverse kids, including after-school, whatever. But the last thing in terms of your proposal for it to potentially become a, um, longer-term standing committee, I think it sounded from some of what I heard that there is a need in the school board for a committee that kind of provides oversight for facilities maintenance, like moving forward. So just kind of making sure what choices are being made about facility maintenance and just having there be that board oversight role. And so if it were to be a longer-term thing, I would also want that on the chart.
I'm calling on you, please, Pam.
So, um, I also, as I've said before, I want everyone to have a seat at the table. But I also am like, I want to make sure that there's a clear charge for this committee and that everybody is aware of what this committee will consist of, who is on the committee, um, and the purpose of the committee. I want to make sure that there is transparency because one of the things, one of the big reasons I am on this board is because I want transparency. Um, as a parent, I didn't feel that there was transparency and now here I am. But I really feel that that is important and I hear what you guys have said, what the parents and the students, and I applaud all the students that have come up. I know that that's not easy, it's not easy for an adult to speak in public, but for a child, I think it is amazing that you guys had the courage to do that and I applaud you. I want to thank Harriman for the report, but I think that there's a lot to look at and it's not one of these things that we can make an easy decision. So I want to make sure that if we do this committee and that we set it up so that the next school committee has that, 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 that the next school committee and the ones of us that are on it, make sure that there is, um, a clear charge to that committee.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Pat?
I just, this is a question for Harriman. Um, I was on the facilities committee in 2005 and one of the things that the gentleman provided, excuse me, I have a cold, was the, um, projected yearly income that we would need in order to sustain and complete all of the changes or whatever that we would need to do in those schools. Is that going to be part of the cost analysis that we get?
You're referring to the priority list that we're providing?
Yes.
So that will provide you the total cost of what will be needed and across the different years in order to execute that list?
Okay, part of the, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, which is hard at my age, but, um, I believe that projected it out even further. It was how, what we were going to have to pay to maintain those schools way into the future. So perhaps you're saying one to five years?
We were asked to look at one, one to five-year priority list, but we can take some of the existing information for what you need to do to maintain the schools and we can do an escalation out several years. You, you can project that.
Okay, I don't know if you need that, but I'd certainly be interested in seeing it.
Okay, so at this point, all school, all school, yes, oh, Dan, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know if I could, um, like to make a motion that we table it until we get all the information? You know?
Okay, there's a motion on the table.
Yes.
A friendly amendment to the motion, uh, table it to a date certain of January 17th unless otherwise acted upon.
Could do that, or I didn't know when they were going to have all the information. I'd hate to start a committee with not everything.
I'll second that motion and open those up to debate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open it up to debate. Uh, so there's a first and a, there's a second. Ah, you're right. Motion to table is a non-debatable motion, so therefore I'm calling. It's a motion to postpone. You made a motion to postpone.
Yes, ta, yeah, table till we have all the information.
So it's a motion to table?
Yeah.
Which is still a privileged motion, my fault, but a date certain ensures that it does come back up on the future agenda versus, um, any ambiguity right now would remain on the table, it could remain on the table indefinitely.
So state the motion so that it is, um, clear to all of us, because between the both of you right now, I am not clear what the motion is.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say January fifteenth and...
Can you state the whole motion?
Yeah.
It'd be seventeenth would be our next, our, our second meeting in January.
Right, yeah, yeah. Propose the, um, ta, tabling of the mo- motion for January seventeenth.
So a motion to table?
Yep.
Until January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the formation of the...
Committee.
Of the facilities, of the ad hoc facilities.
Yep.
Did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, because there is a date on there, a motion to table with a date, that does allow us to have debating conversation around that one. So would anyone like to have conversation around that one?
I just, I'll just make this comment. I support the table of motions so that the superintendent, future chair of the school board can actually get together and look at the makeup formulation of that committee, what it looks at like, uh, the mission statement, charge, and some firm time timelines too. I don't think we have to have the full, complete report in order to form the committee. I do think that it needs to be formed to look at this and provide some guidance or recommendations to the board at a date certain in the future.
Any other question, uh, comments? Alright, I'll call for a vote on the motion to...
Wait, I did have, what's, what's the difference between a motion to table and postpone?
Motion to ta, motion to table ends, there's no, there's no debatable conversation on that, it's just a motion to table, um, and it doesn't have to come back. But this is a motion to table to a particular date, so because adding that allows the conversation, and now it needs to get brought back on that date by the next committee. Does that clarify? Okay, Pat?
Um, is that the date?
At least the way that's I, the way I understand it, I've already passed off my Roberts rules, so I will may need to dig that back out if necessary.
Is that the date that we will table it to, or is that the date that we will table it by? That we will hold it on it? Does it have to be acted on, it can be acted on in time between now and then?
No, actually it can't.
It can't?
It's tabled until the agenda for January seventeenth. You can't bring it back up as is tabled until January seventeenth.
That's too late for me.
And then it would be a motion on that agenda to then vote to form the committee at that point.
Mm-hmm. Is Jan, is January seventeenth the first, um, committee member, I mean, sorry, committee meeting?
It's the second.
It's the second. When is the first one?
January third.
Okay, because the report will be done by the thirty-first, right? You said the report will be...
No, she said the end of the year, or, let's just hold on, um, by the end of this year, or the beginning of, so end of December, beginning of January.
That, that's what we're targeting, to have the report wrapped up.
Sorry, I thought you said the end of this year, so I was thinking the thirty-first.
Yeah. So, again, just to clarify, so, either, either way, I think of whether we do it at January seventeenth, January third, now, a committee, an ad hoc committee, facilities committee, needs to be formed in order to review the report and make recommendations, review all of the charges recommended in the report. That needs to happen regardless of when the report is finished. So whether we, whether we choose to table it until January seventeenth or not, it, it ultimately needs to happen. This is just allowing us to create the committee so that when the new committee is in place, we, we are ready to form the committee, find members, create the committee. It doesn't mean that the committee would be doing anything until that report is complete, and that we have it and we have time to review it.
That's the way I understand it.
That's the way I understand it as well, and I think that by the time the other committee is in, then we can decide what the makeup of that committee will look like. Net, tonight is just a vote to say that we need a committee, because obviously, this is a lot of information, and in order to have a transparent, um, dialogue, and to know that everybody has a seat at the table, we need to have a committee. So that's just for the committee, nothing else is going to be established until the new committee is built.
Right, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I, I hate to wait till the, I hate to wait till the seventeenth. Um, one, because the new committee's going to have cer, I mean, I guess you could take it into advisement, when the next chair decides, okay, here's the subcommittees, and we have to think about, again, not only staff and others, but board members have to be assigned to those committees. You've got negotiations, you've got finance, you've got all these committees, and I guess if you take it into an account that maybe that that one's going to come up, then it'll help prioritize that. But if it's already established, then it's off and running. Um, because again, the other big charge that the new committee's got is they've got to hire a new superintendent next year. That's going to take a huge amount of work, the study's going to take a huge amount of work. Establishing this now allows you guys to get off the ground and running, um, whether it's the new chair, working with superintendent, coming up with the mission, coming up with kind of the, the foundation of what that committee is. If you wait, you can't talk about it until the seventeenth, right? Like, it's off the table even from a, even from a board chair superintendent perspective. So you're waiting till the seventeenth where that can't even be formed, right?
No, not at all, actually. You can talk about it, you can talk about it in superintendent's reports, you can work on it, just like this was worked on before, you know, any motion or order. So you can, it doesn't preclude you from working on it, but it does allow time. Um, I personally would feel, it's, it's, in my opinion, and I've done this a lot for six years, irresponsible to form a committee without knowing what its mission is and the makeup of that committee, because those are debatable items. Okay, so I don't want to go ahead and just form a committee, and I understand, the next chair is going to have to assign, school board members, get it, I understand that, okay? But they can talk about this, they can work through this, in order to figure out what that makeup is prior to January seventeenth.
And, and in most cases, I would agree with you. Um, in this case, I disagree, and the only reason I disagree is because Harriman clearly outlined, outlined what the mission is. We've got at least a half a dozen questions that have to be answered, there's prioritization. I mean, I think the mission's very clear in this case. I have, I've also been on several that didn't have a mission, and it, it kind of flounders, and you don't know what the direction is. I think this one's very clear, and that's the only reason I disagree with you in this case.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call for...
No, I was just going to say that I, I, um, can I make an amendment to that tabling? I can't, to the date?
No.
Okay.
No, because it's a motion to table, you cannot, even though it has that part, motion to table in there, so it can't be amended. Alright, and I'm going to call for a vote on the, um, on the motion to table to the seventeenth. All those in favor, motion to table. And all those opposed. Alright, so Dan's amendment fails, we are back to actually forming the committee, and I'm sorry, Brian, I should write this down, there's a lot going. Um, the ad hoc facilities advisory...
Ad hoc facilities advisory committee.
Right, alright, I'm going to call for a vote. We've had conversation on this one enough, so all those in favor forming the committee. I've called for the votes, all those in favor of forming the committee. Right, any opposed, those opposed? One, two, three, motion passes with five, three. Alright, so form, a committee has been formed, facilities committee has been formed. Alright, moving back to you, let's go all the way back to page one, ladies and gentlemen. Um, we are moving back to the school committee's students' report, Rep. Gillian, none this evening. Alright, Dr. Brown, your superintendent's report.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I think most of these things are self-explanatory.
I'm, Dr. Brown, can you give a moment for people to transition?
Oh, sure.
Sure, thank you. It's just like when we form assemblies, once you get the board members on there, they form the... You're to the last night, there we go. Here we go, right. Thank you all for coming this evening. I appreciate you loving your community so much, and for coming to speak to us about it, so thank you. Thank you. Good, okay, okay, that'll be the next test, that's the, the next... Oh, wait, I have a live mic. I have a live mic. You, you have a live mic too. Alright, go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Uh, thank you very much. Thanks to everyone for coming tonight, and welcome to our new committee members, as they, uh, are inaugurated on the fourteenth, so it's nice to see you both. Uh, so just a couple of dates, there's a soft opening for the Donald Gay Performing Arts Center, that's December twelfth, that will be a concert. Um, there's a reorganization meeting, an election of officers on December twenty. Um, that same evening, the Fairview Choral Group will be singing, seats will be at a premium, so get early to get a good seat. I already told you about inauguration. Um, in the packet, there is a memo regarding a technology purchase. It was prepared by Peter Robinson, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions about that, either for me or for Peter. Pat?
My first question is, um, the analysis was based on the cost of iPads and the Mac Air. Um, are Chromebooks no longer available? Why are not, and they, can you give us an estimate on that cost?
So Peter, why don't you come on up to the microphone, we can talk a little bit about, um, her questions.
Push the button, there we go. So Chromebooks, um, would be a completely different direction for us, um, whereas iPads would be a continuation of what we already have in grades K through eight. Um, so it would require an awful lot more professional development and time to get everybody ready to make that transition.
My question leads into the grade eight issue. They already have iPads, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, yes. So the eighth grade, along with actually grades five through eight, are part of the state, um, MLTI program, so they're paid for by the, the state of Maine, the Department of Education. Um, those are on a, a refresh cycle, so that as the state up, uh, refreshes a grade every year, we have the opportunity to decide where to put those.
Saying is, though, we're, we're going to put new ones in grades nine, ten, and eleven. What about the eighth graders coming in in the fall?
That, yes, so that will be the next year, the, the expectation is that MLTI will allow us to expand a grade level next year. So those will go to the ninth graders. So...
Sorry, go all the way up through grade twelve?
Correct. So the current nine through eleven will receive them sometime before the end of this year, probably later in the spring, and then the ninth graders will have new iPads that will come through MLTI during the summer.
Thank you.
Yep, Pam?
So my concern...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you said Pam, sorry, go ahead. I know you always assume it's you, but you know, sometimes, the other Pam, the other Pam likes to talk too, Pam.
Um, Albert?
I think my, I think my one question was, um, it did talk about in the memo about functionality being similar to laptops, um, and I guess my biggest concern is, in terms of preparing students for college and for real world life situations, and having the knowledge of laptop usage, which they will need, versus iPad usage. Um, I guess I'm, I'm interested in understanding more about the comparability with the functionality and the programs and all of that between an iPad, a new iPad versus what they're using for laptops.
So I'll be, be completely honest about the fact that we've tried iPads before at the high school, ten years ago, um, and things have changed dramatically since then. Um, I know that a lot of the concerns around iPads were around the fact that you could only be using a single app at once, we didn't have keyboards, there was no file system, you couldn't save documents in a way that is comparable to what you do on, on a fully functional computer. The current operating system overcomes all of those difficulties, we can have multiple windows, we can have two apps open at once, so a student could be doing some research in one window, taking some notes in another window. Um, the current operating system allows for applications to save files to a files app on the iPad, or to Google Drive, which is very comparable with what we're doing with our laptops now. Most of the writing that students are doing now is in Google Docs, so that transfers very nicely to the iPad, works perfectly well in mobile Safari on the iPad.
Can I say something about that? As, so I was, um, I think that that's a bit, it is a bit of a myth, that it's not going to be necessarily be college-ready, because a lot of students are now just getting iPads for college, but the iPads that have been selected aren't the ones that have the sort of speeds, I mean, they're, they're not the ones that people would be getting to try to get the equivalent to a computer, and this also won't matter except for students who are maybe, because it's all app-based, that's the biggest problem, it's app-based, so if there's software that students want to use, like for math, or, you know, I don't, I don't know what high school students do, they, that would be a limitation, but that doesn't mean we throw out the iPads. I'm just wondering how students who are using that type of thing, do they have access to another computer, what are they doing?
So, doesn't seem to work very well this evening. So most of the apps that we're using, um, are actually web apps, they, they are delivered through the web, and will work on Safari or Chrome on, on an iPad, just as well as they do on a laptop. Um, there are some edge cases, computer science, Mr. Isman's program is one, I actually met with him this morning, we were talking with a potential vendor that would deliver virtual desktops, it turns out that with what he's doing, that's going to present some challenges, because he needs local access to be able to connect serial devices without getting too technical to computers in his room. Um, the solution for those one or two, I think, edge cases, where there are classrooms where that is true, is we can hold back some of the laptops that we have and use them as effectively computer labs in those classrooms.
Okay, Jason?
Just a little clarification, I, I, I read the memo, we've talked about a finance committee, but this isn't coming up for any action on the school board until January or so, correct?
This is not coming up for action, not tonight and not ever, this is a policy decision.
So, okay, that's what I, so this is a policy decision, you're informing the board that this is a decision that's going to happen?
I'm informing the board, yes, that this is a decision, you have appropriated the money, and we are moving forward with the information as detailed by Peter.
Okay, so second part, follow-up. The one thing I miss, and, and I do appreciate the comments on, um, the upgrades to the iPad system, the operating system in the past ten years, they are marvelous. I am concerned a little bit about speed, that's something the finance committee didn't really go over, I want to make sure that what we're, and maybe some new light switches too, we could throw in there, if they can control, someone jump up and down, please. Um, it's actually, so, uh, back to that, I, I'm really, I want to make sure that we're getting what we were, the functionality within the price, and I'm, I'm going to, you know, leave that to everybody's job, that's their job, it's great. But what is a potential or possibility to include a, um, a mouse, a trackball, something? I mean, I've used this very, very well. I do, I enjoy it, I like it, it's functional, you know, and I use this as I would my MacBook at home, or my PC, but I do miss that ball.
So the, the newer model of the keyboard case, which is what we're getting, it's the newer model of what you have right there, actually has a trackpad on the front of it.
So my concern, I know that you just addressed the fact that we, um, you know, we did do iPads in the past, and it did not go very well. Um, and we ended up going back to the computer. My question too is the AP exams. Now, a lot of times, we're going to, they need a computer to do the AP exams, and if we're going to be a school that's going to excel, we want to make sure that we give our students every opportunity and every tool that they're able to use to excel. So is that going to be an issue with the iPad?
So the AP exams actually, uh, currently can be taken on iOS, there is an app for iOS that runs, um, on iPads that the exams work with. Um, we certainly, as we run, roll this out this spring, we will make sure that that does work the way we want it to work, and if it doesn't, again, we can hold back some of the laptops and use them for testing.
Okay. Any other questions for Peter regarding technology? Brian?
Yeah, so I think, uh, uh, first, Peter, thanks for the memo. I think the memo was great, you and I have had a lot of good conversation. Um, but I think there's a couple of things that I just want you guys, want you to address to, to these guys, just for information, I'm sure Laura will, will appreciate as well. Um, first of all, my understanding is we've already had eighty-plus laptops broken in, what, three months-ish?
That is correct, eighty-eight in fact is the number.
And I'm, I'm also glad that we're not going to Chromebooks, because those are more, even more fragile than, than the, the MacBooks, um, so I'm glad we decided not against, to go against that. Um, but I want you to talk a little bit about our process for fixing laptops, what we've been going through, the warranties, the, you know, I know we've even talked about bringing in-house to fix, you know, laptops or iPads, and just if you can speak to that real quick, so these guys are aware.
Sure, so when we purchased the current fleet of laptops, we were using ESSA money in the fall of twenty twenty. We were not allowed at that time to use those funds to purchase an extended... We were not allowed at that time to use those funds to purchase an extended warranty for the laptops, so we only had a year warranty on them. So we've been paying for the repairs out of our district funding. And we have been using the Apple Depot for those repairs because it is, in fact, the cheapest solution for us. Every year, I have one of my technicians do the research into what it would cost us to buy good parts for them, not sort of the cheapest parts that we can find on the internet, but parts that actually meet the specs to be effective and last. And what he finds is that the depot has access to better pricing than we can ever get. They buy in bulk, so they get, you know, a screen costs them less than it would cost us to buy. And then we would also then have to have a technician sitting down pretty much all day, every day, putting those new parts into the laptops. So it's not cost-effective for us to do that. The iPads will actually be covered by a four-year extended warranty. It will cover them for accidental damage.
How much, comparing to the laptop, how much will it cost to have to repair the iPad?
So because of that accidental damage, Apple Care warranty, it won't cost us anything. Two incidents per device per year, no matter what happens. I mean, other than loss or theft. If it comes back in pieces, it will be covered by that warranty.
Any other questions for Peter? Jillian, go for it.
So I know, I looked at this before coming here, and it says that seniors are keeping their laptops. I know with, like, other school districts, when they transition to newer technology, the seniors have been able to buy out the laptops from the school department. Are we going to be able to have that chance to do that, or no?
So the problem that we have with that is that we can sell them to a remarketing company and get a very good price on them. But frankly, I would not want to ask community members to pay that because we wouldn't be able to provide any warranty on them. They're four years old. You could carry them out the door, and they could fail the next day. And that's one of the reasons that we're trading them in at this point, because we are seeing those kind of failures happen.
Okay. Any other questions for Peter on technology?
Just one comment. I would give them away as is, whereas I understand the money that comes back in the district on resale. But there are some kids, and it's a requirement for college now, as a lot of parents and seniors know. If they can't afford a laptop, and that's a challenge to their... You know, I'd rather give them two laptops than not.
That can be considered during budget conversations. Any other conversation or questions for Peter?
I do have a couple. Karen?
Sorry, I am not taking... There's no public comment right now on this.
It's an agenda item. Will you be having public comment on it?
No, there's no actionable item on the school committee side.
If I had spoke during public participation, would you have taken it at that time?
Yes, because that's when public participation was open.
So it was listed on the agenda, so I assumed because it was listed on the agenda as an item to be taken up.
Then that is my problem. That is my fault, then. I wasn't clear on that. So go ahead.
My name is Laura Garcia. I'm from 20 Skilling's Corner Road. I have a student who is a senior at Yale. I'm also a taxpayer. I'm also somebody who, Karen, as you know, right on the eve of the pandemic, I asked the school board if they would set aside time for me to give about an hour-long presentation to the school board about the iPad initiative here in Auburn because I'd done a lot of research around it. And it's kind of interesting because the pandemic shut everything down. And then we went remote, using laptops, discovered that a lot of our students didn't have access, even though we'd been told that was really the focus. I heard about this change, coming home from students saying that this was going to take place. And I heard it was because of the money. And I have to tell you, then, when I read the report tonight, I was kind of like, it doesn't really... It's not really focused on money as the choice. Yes, there was expensive costs. But if there's a warranty available through the iPads, I imagine if we decided to stick with laptops, there would be a warranty also available. This has been tried before, and I went back. And I was looking at the article, and it said the results were overwhelmingly in favor of laptops. Eighty-eight point five percent of teachers and seventy-four percent of students favored them over iPads. Now, this was not 10 years ago. This was in 2016, when we had to make a decision at that time for what we were going to use for the three years that preceded the pandemic. And at that point, we had used the iPads. And the feedback was that the iPads provide no educational function in the classroom. Students use them as toys. Word processing is near to impossible. I applaud this change. Somebody else said the iPads are largely student gaming devices. Another teacher wrote, "The iPads are a disaster." Student... One student said, "We need laptops," and said it three times. "Ipads are easier to play games on and get addicted to," another said. Here's the thing. I know a lot of the changes that he's talking about have come to pass. But I do know there is a fundamental difference between laptops and iPads. XAPI and SCORM. Laptops run on SCORM. iPads run on XAPI. Do you know what that is? Do you know what the function is? Do you know, Peter? Okay, well... I'm not belittling you. It's about they can track the data of the students. They can track the data from the students' phones, the students' iPad watch, I mean, their little watch, their phones, their iPad. Everything they do, every app they open. Okay? And the reason I know this is because I did research around why we did the iPads and why we pushed them on our high school students before. And it was... Go look up the Los Angeles Unified District because they were pushing iPads at the same time. And it had to do with loading curriculum on them. This is coming from the DOE. Don't let our kids be an experiment again. And when they do go to college, and again, I don't have a horse in this race. My daughter is graduating. But I'm more than happy to educate any parent who has a kid in the elementary schools because this is important. And this is coming from the DOE, and it is about digitizing education.
Thanks very much, Dr. Brown. We have Mr. Conrad's retirement letter left.
We do. It is my great sadness to recognize Mark Conrad's retirement at the end of the 23-24 school year. I've known Mark for quite a while, and we were very fortunate to get him here in Auburn. He's one of the best, if not the best, business administrator in New England. So, Mark, it is with great sadness that we accept your letter of retirement and wish you well.
Can we deny it? Please. Can we just say no? All right. Thank you, everyone. It's getting late. It's moving along. My only... Under my chairperson's report this evening, I would say just a few words of gratefulness for having chaired this committee and for having all of you along with me. I can appreciate much of what we said earlier today, that we can have conversation, we can have disagreements, we can have discourse, we can have agreements. But at the end of the day, our focus is on our kids, that we are working hard to make sure they have the best education possible. So I thank you all. It has been a tremendous honor to sit in this middle seat for as long as I have. I would love to say I'll be watching on Wednesday nights to see what you guys are doing, but that would be a complete lie. So with all that being said, it has been a pleasure to sit here. Mr. Mayor, city council update?
Three things. First thing, it's my absolute pleasure to announce that on Monday night, we did approve the allocation of $9,000 from the ARPA Fund, American Recovery Protection Act, towards a class of 2024 project graduation.
Okay, thank you.
Guys, thank Pam Albert. It was not my idea. Frankly, when she said it to me, I looked at her cross-eyed. I'm like, no way. But after a while, it grew on me, and it did make a lot of sense. So Pam, thank you for bringing that up. Great idea.
It's a lot of boxes.
Yeah, no, it made sense. Second, I did get a great recommendation for funds from Jillian. It's my fault. It got lost communication on my desk. I got it electronically, but it was after the agenda was set. So I am going to forward this out, or back to you, so you can give it out to Mr. Aneer, the principal, and it can go through those chains and come back to this body sometime in January, I imagine, okay? So no, thank you for that. So three, I got to say, you know, thank you to Chair Matthews and the superintendent for the last two years. I know, I think I've been the first mayor to sit in the seat in 20, 30 years. It's eye-opening, and I do hope that future mayors take the time to sit in the seat because that collabor... There's a reason it's in the charter that the school committee should have the mayor as a member. And I think it's absolutely critical for that communication flow to happen between both bodies. So you've been awesome. Thanks. And I tell you, while over two years, it's been refreshing not to sit in that seat and watch you and give you some slack for doing it. So thank you for that.
I thank you for your... I'm going to zip it. Let's move along. Committee reports. You have agendas and minutes from committee reports. Any questions or comments from any of the agendas or minutes that are on there? All right, seeing none. There's no old business this evening either. New business, can I attain a motion to approve policy A U B B B school committee legal status? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam Albert. Questions, comments on that one? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, can I call for a motion to approve policy A U B B E D C quorums? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent search committee to make procedural decisions regarding the superintendent search process. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Oh, look at that. Pam Hart will put you first. Brian, second. Questions, comments on that one? Question... Oh. Okay, the last time you wanted to say something, and I missed you. Now this time, you don't want to say anything, and I got you. Okay, all right. All those in favor. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor. All right, motion passes. Thank you. And to go along with that, can I attain a motion to approve MSMA as the hiring agent to assist the Auburn School Department with our superintendent search? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Pat, I'll take you a second. Questions, comments on that one?
Can I make one?
Yes, go ahead, Pam.
So at the time that I wrote the memo, we did not have a cost estimate from MSMA yet or a timeline. We have received a preliminary timeline that the superintendent search committee is going to be reviewing and approving. Basically, the most important would be posting the position starting December 15th, which is coming right up, so that that can get posted and we can start taking applications. And the overall cost estimate is similar to the last superintendent search. Basically, at this point, we expect it not to exceed $9,500, which is similar, if not slightly more, than the last superintendent search. But we don't expect it to be more than the last superintendent search.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Pam on that one?
And that's based on receiving 15 applicants. So if we were to receive more than 15 applicants, then the price could potentially go up.
I hope you have that problem. I hope you have that problem. All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of hiring MSMA as the hiring agent, it is approved. Thank you. And with that, we've already done motion E. Upcoming meetings, those of you who are remaining on have the December 14 inauguration. December 20 will be the first meeting of the newly-formed school committee. And if you remember back a couple of years ago, they will vote for a chair and a vice chair. So that will happen at that meeting. Then you have your January 3 and your January 17 meeting. So any future calls for future agenda items or requests for information?
Oh, for... So DE, I admit, we didn't get a chance just now to report, but I think it would be great to have as a future agenda item for Pam to just update people on sort of what the future or what that committee doing moving forward. It might be about...
Okay, any others? I'll pass it along to the next people, but I'll pass it along. All right, with all that in mind, moment. Do I have a... Can I call for a motion to... Oh, no, no. Listen, four and a half years, Pam, four and a half years. My wall is up right now. I don't even see you over there. And I call for a motion to adjourn.
With a...
Thank you, Brian. You want to second it?
One final second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, it's the first time in four and a half years. Meetings adjourned!